If I could bring this meeting to order, if I could ask you all to rise so we can do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then a moment of silence, please, in memory of the Easton firefighter who was killed during the storm. And then, go to order in the pledge. Just as we're kicking things off here, I did want to take a moment and just recognize that we spent 14 days kind of recovering from the storm, and did want to take one quick moment at the beginning of the meeting here and just recognize that in looking at this storm and looking at how it impacted our town, certainly it's the worst storm in my lifetime. When I look at the neighborhoods, the damage, it hit Fairfield harder than any other town in Connecticut. I think the response was phenomenal. When I look at what it meant in our town, and specifically our town government, we think in terms of fire, police, DPW, our health department responding, but I think in this storm, because of the magnitude of it, I can't think of a department that wasn't impacted by this. And I go down the list from IT and finance that actually came in early and made sure that our payroll checks for town employees were run off so they'd get paid at the end of the week regardless of what happened during the storm. When I look at engineering, working to make sure that our maps with trees down and closed roads are updated literally hourly during the storm, look at our building department working weekends, I look at the Board of Ed in the both as part of the Ludlow Shelter, serving food to our shelter guests during the storm, the departments that helped staff the call center, everybody from Parks and Rec to Human Resources folks volunteering to help out in there. I just am floored by the, I just haven't seen another event that brought literally every employee in town together. It was really, it really made me proud to see the way everybody worked together, how smoothly it worked, the amount of cooperation, the fact that I think we went through all that and we didn't miss a shift. I don't remember anybody calling in for an hour out, so it was just a great response, I think, by our town employees. And frankly, on behalf of the residents, when I look at the things that we asked our residents to do, were really hard. One, evacuate your homes. Now, while not everybody left, we got a phenomenal response to that, and that saved, I think, both personal injury and potentially saved us from a loss of life, given some of the flood damage that took place in that. And I think it saved our emergency services workers from having to go out in the storm and rescue people because they weren't in their homes. They did take time to evaluate, evacuate. I think that also helped us respond faster after the storm for the cleanup and getting services back attached. So I think just as much as it was tremendously damaging experience in terms of loss of property, and I think we had over 1,000 homes that were damaged in some sort of way by the flood. I think we had 25 to 30 homes that had significant tree damage from trees coming down. There were estimates of over 1,000 trees overall came down. That's a lot of trauma to put our town through, but I was very impressed with our town employees. I was very impressed with our residents and how they responded. So that's my observations on that, and if my fellow selectmen would like to offer any thoughts.
Well, just quickly, I would like to agree with everything you said, Mike. And our town did a phenomenal job, from every department to every citizen, working together, helping, and putting other people's needs, you know, equal to theirs and ahead of theirs. And when I got to walk down to the beach two days after everything happened and could see all the neighbors who were able to get back there at that point in time, working together, they were pumping out each other's basements. I mean, it was heartwarming, and it was like watching a well-oiled team working together across the whole town. And it was a good feeling and a great outcome from a big storm. So I'd like to thank everyone.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. What I've said about this storm is that it was an absolute mess, but a miracle. And I think that it is amazing how the town came together, and I feel, like you said, proud, proud of our, the people who serve in so many ways, and the unsung heroes, you know, the people who are in the backgrounds, who just do the work without any hope for thanks, and just are there on so many levels. So I feel grateful for that, and I think that, you know, in a time in the midst of the election and everything, and sometimes focus on our differences, it was just so inspiring and hopeful how we all came together. So I really am grateful, and also want to thank you, Mike, for your leadership. I think that, you know, you've thanked a lot of people, and Kevin I know was here volunteering as well. I think it's just, it's been an amazing experience, and I think now we learn from it and we go forward, and each time I think there was a lot of improvement from Irene, and then we learn from this one, and hopefully we won't have to face anything like this again in our lifetime, but...
Thank you, good point. There were a number of improvements we made between Irene and this storm, and just so everybody's aware, we're going to sit down and have a debriefing, as we did after Irene. We'll put together a series of lessons learned and things we can improve in. I will, I've asked Art Reed to head that up, as he did last time, and over the next few weeks when that's complete, we'll ask him to join, come before this board and kind of step through that, so everybody can kind of go through that.
That's great.
All right, certainly if there are any thoughts or suggestions you all have in terms of things you watched or saw that we can improve on, please either send those my way or send those directly to Art Reed, so that we can capture those, too.
Okay.
All right, now getting on for the, if that's okay, we'll get on with the rest of the agenda?
Please.
All right, we have some resignations. Board of Assessment Appeals, Stephen Tower. Shelfish Commission, Gregory Lanute. And Special Project Standing Building Committee, Mike Giacquinto. And we'll be looking for replacements in those three areas. Reappointments. Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, this does require RTM approval. Sheila M. Dravis, okay to take these together?
Please.
All right, and Sharon Pastilli may have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions or discussion from the group? Kevin, you okay?
I'm good.
Kristen?
Just to comment, wanted to thank both of you for serving and for being willing to continue. And just a question for you, either both of you, just what you see is the most pressing needs for the commission at this point? Any concerns, comments?
And if you're going to answer that, could you please come up to the podium, so the microphone is there, and identify yourself for the home audience?
This is Sharon Pastilli, Chair of the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. I think the most, as a commission, the thing, our biggest goal is to see our recycling numbers increase. We implemented Single Stream, and we're expecting the numbers to go up more than they have. And so we've been continuing to investigate why the numbers haven't gone up to the extent that we'd like, and we're continuing with the public awareness campaign, just to make sure that everybody's aware of what they're supposed to be doing, and to try to do it in a way that doesn't really impact town budgets. So using social media and the like in order to get the word out.
Good.
Do you have any other questions or...
Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, your turn at the podium.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sheila Dravis. I repeat what Sharon has said about getting the word out, public awareness. It's really important to increase and move forward with Single Stream. It does save the town money. Would also like to continue with our movement into the schools and make sure that there's public awareness within the kids and the classrooms there. That's been something we've been touching on a little bit, but hope to do a little bit more in the next four years.
I have a question, if you don't mind. With the Single Stream, we all have a lot more recycles now, and my bin gets filled by Wednesday, Thursday, and by Sunday I don't have room for everything. So is there, is there a process to acquire a second blue bin, and how would you get one if you need one?
Yes, you can call the solid waste recycling office, the department, and, or you can go to Home Depot and, you know, purchase your own or another, you know, or something else that I've done. Because there's less garbage, I've turned my garbage can into a recycling bin. You just want to make sure it's, you can take a Sharpie and mark recycling on it.
Okay.
That way your private hauler will know for sure.
Which what?
What it is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Just your comment about the schools is great, and do you work together with the green teams and the PTAs?
Actually...
And with the school administration? What kind of communication have you had?
We actually, Sharon and I, were part of the original green team. So, and it's now a, it was, became an official PTA committee, and it's, we haven't worked with them directly as, from the commission to the green team at this point, but that's something that we'd like to do and check to see where they're at and what activities they're running.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
No, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, appointments to the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee. Jean Finley may have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any comments? Is Jean here?
No.
Okay. I know Jean has been spoken very highly of by members of the Burr Gardens Committee. They've been looking for someone to fill out their roster for a bit, and Jean has graciously volunteered to help out there. Any discussion?
Are any members of the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee here?
Yes.
Yes, and just curious, if you had occasion to speak with Jean, and has she been able to attend any meetings, and is she, in your opinion, ready to go and join the group?
I'm Ellen Gould, a member of the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee. I have not met Jeanne Finley. I work closely with her husband and have heard many great things about her from other members of the committee, none of which could, none of whom could be here this evening. So I thought I would come and introduce myself and have a conversation with her, but unfortunately she's not here. But we're looking forward to it, more talent and more great ideas to support the town, and we're raring to go.
Good, and I think you'll have a plan that you'll be presenting to us at some point, coming up here soon.
Very soon, yes.
Okay.
I think in January.
Mr. Cannelly, did you have anything to add to that?
I'm good. Thank you.
I know Ms. Finley's not here. Are you all comfortable voting on this today, or would you like to...
Aye, personally.
I think for me, hearing that the other members of the committee are supportive and that there's a sense that you'll work well together, and she's a welcome addition, certainly her enthusiasm, I'm willing to be a part of it. It's something I'm willing to support.
Yeah, I do know Ms. Finley and her family, so I'm comfortable in that regard. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ellen, thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, Wendy Brent Martinenez from 684 Catamount Street for term 1112 through 1116. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Wendy, for coming back through the process. You were here before, and I think just some paperwork issues that we have updated and hopefully will help everyone see that you're a great candidate for this position. Clearly you've had a chance to talk to members of the commission as you're sitting together today, and I know you have, so I'm glad that you're bringing your experience to this, and we'll look forward to supporting you through the RTM process.
All right, I will also comment, I've known Wendy for a number of years now. I know her commitment to recycling, going green, and sustainability, and I think she's, incorporated this as part of one of her tenants or values in the business. And we had worked in the same profession in real estate for a number of years before this, so I'm thrilled that, Wendy, you'd take this time to volunteer. I want to thank you for lending your expertise to the town and helping out in a great way here. So any further comments from here? Any comments from the public? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wendy, both congratulations, and would you like to say anything?
I just want to say...
If you would, from the podium.
I just want to say thank you very much for your kind words, and I'm looking forward to serving the town. I'm happy to hear that recycling is a, you know, important point that they want to focus on, because that's obviously something that I want to focus on, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right, Wendy, thank you very much, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Fair TV Operational Committee Charge. Just to be clear, this is a charge that was approved by this board a few years back. We've gone through a host of discussion and agenda items on this, and I think what we're trying to do here for this board's consideration, it's been suggested that this charter needs to be looked at, that in fact the Fair TV has become such a big part of our culture that we need to make it more formal and perhaps even look at making it part of an ordinance, have the RTM consider making it a more formal part of our town's structure. To do that, it seemed appropriate to modify this charge and just set a sunset on this through June 30th, is what I would be proposing, to let the committee, which we'll be pointing in the next item, focus on bringing this charge up to date and any other items to be added that for consideration, so that Fair TV continues to be part of the Fairfield So I guess to kick that off, I would just suggest keeping it simple and adding to the very final paragraph under duration, it says, "Committee members shall serve terms of three years. Committee shall issue a report to the Selectman June 30th, in addition to getting reports annually outlining progress and further goals." And this charge shall terminate on June 30th, 2013, unless extended. Attorney Lesser, if you...
Just the last paragraph.
Yes.
It says June 30, 2007.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know if the year is 2012 or 2013 now.
I'm sorry, this says 2007 at the moment. I would like to add a sentence at the end of that paragraph, a last sentence, saying this committee shall terminate on June 30th, 2013.
But the report is due, this says the report is due 2007, that should also be the time of...
That is a historical reference, and when this was passed in October 11th, 2006, I wasn't here, but I'm assuming that report was issued on a timely basis.
My question is, are you asking them to give another report?
This says giving, getting reports annually.
Okay.
So...
Perhaps just one...
Well, I wasn't, I haven't...
Change to 2013 also, so that it's... If you're asking for another report, if you're not, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm...
My suggestion would be to just strike, strike the language there.
Strike the second... So rather than adding the sentence I suggested on, just replace the second sentence of that with, "This committee shall terminate in 2013," which it would then make it all part of...
No, I mean, that's another option, but my thought was to strike the language, "The committee shall issue a report to the Selectman by June 30th, 2007," instead...
Okay, from a Robert Trolle standpoint, we have a amendment on the table. It has not been seconded.
I'll second it, I just didn't, I didn't catch all of it, though.
Well, you're seconding the wording that I suggested.
Yes.
And then we'll come back to Kristen's point, once we've agreed on this amendment, if that's appropriate.
That's fine.
Can you clarify your amendment, please?
That we would have a, there are two sentences in the last paragraph that we would add, the third sentence and final sentence, to be, "This committee shall terminate on June 30th, 2013."
That's pretty straightforward, I think we can, we can move with that and then go through a second change if possible? Want to do it that way?
Yep, we'll take one amendment at a time. So any discussion on the First Amendment?
Just, the first time you said it, you said this charge shall terminate, so you want to say this committee shall terminate? That's what you're...
I think the committee makes...
That's fine, just clarify.
...more appropriate charge, thank you for catching that.
Okay, so it should read, "This committee shall terminate on June 30th, 2013." Okay, I'm good with that.
All right. Any other discussion at this time?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, the amendment only. All right, going to the public. Any comments from the public on the amendment, and the amendment only? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Can I ask, can I ask just one question on the amendment?
Sure.
If the amendment passes, does that, it might be a question for Stan as well, that defaults this committee to a temporary committee status?
Why, we clarify that.
Is that the, is that the thought?
Mr. Lesser, if you could, from... That was certainly the intent.
Right, that's what I thought.
I believe it would be a temporary committee, since there's no, there's, it's not in perpetuity, it has an ending date, so it's, I think by definition, temporary. So, yes, the answer is yes.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Aye.
On the amendment, please.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so this, the charges before us, as amended, any other suggestions or amendments?
My thought would be that we do need to look at the first two sentences, because the first sentence, "Committee members shall serve for a term of three years," needs, if...
Do you...
Shall serve for the duration of the committee.
Or potentially just...
Striking.
Striking the sentence.
Right.
What would be your preference?
Well, that's fine, just for, can I just discuss before making a motion? Is this okay, since we're discussing the charge? Yeah, that, striking's one possibility, which makes sense, again, just trying to make sure that we're consistent here. And then, again, I think either we're asking, we're going to look at possibly striking that second sentence, the beginning of that as well. I think the one thing about this second sentence is, and my understanding of our past conversations here, has been that we were really hoping that this group will go back and take a look at where things are now, given all the work that's been done and time put in, to relook at it and come back and just update us and let us know. So I think we, whether we're calling it a report, it's not annual because this is a temporary committee, so I would just suggest that we, I think it is probably best, and I will make a motion, to strike the first sentence entirely, and to then change the second sentence to read, "The committee shall report to the Selectman prior to its June 30th termination date."
All right, June 30th, 2013, and just put a period after that with that, does that do what you want?
There may be a...
Sorry to be standing up there again. I think it would be best that you at least define the terms that the members are serving. Don't leave it, just don't leave it blank, you know, because you're appointing them for a certain term. You could say, I mean, three years is fine, when, if the committee terminates, it terminates.
If we look, if we look at, in response to that...
There should be some time.
Right, if we look at the charge, they're being reported until July 13, so basically on July 1st, 2013, they're...
So we could define it as that.
You could say...
So in essence, their terms run the same term as the committee.
Okay, it's provided that.
We could just simplify it in one sentence and say something along the lines of, "The committee members will serve a term ending on June 30th, 2013, and issue a report to the Board of Selectmen prior to that date." Would that do?
That works.
Something along those lines?
Yes, that works.
Kristen, what do you think?
I think it's great.
Do I reword it a little bit?
No, I'm just trying to write it down so I can...
So that would be striking sentence one, striking sentence two, and replacing it with, "Committee members shall serve a term ending on June 30th, 2013, comma, and issue a report to the Board of Selectmen prior to June 30th, 2013." If I, which would coincide with this, right?
Is that a final motion?
That's a motion?
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Jen, do you have all that written down?
I do.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Phil Men?
No, I think, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the, and the report that we are looking for, so that this is clear today, is that we're asking this group to come back and report on the work of the committee as well as this charge itself? Is that what you all understand this to be as well? Or simply the report back to the body related to the work of the committee? And I raise that because one of the things that has been discussed, which I think is a valid issue, you brought it up, Mr. Tetra, and I think it's been brought up before by members of the committee who have been serving, the idea of creating an ordinance, that there are a number of possibilities to try and allow this to be a more formal, permanent structure with clearly defined scope moving forward, given where we are today. So, again, my question is, this is open-ended language, a report, which I'm fine with, but I want to make sure that there's clarification here, that the three of us as the Board of Selectmen are clear that the report may or may not include this, the charge itself versus the operations of the committee.
Okay, so perhaps if we added something that said, "This report should include, but not be limited to, recommendations for the future of this Fair TV committee."
Okay.
Recommendations on any changes or modifications to the charge, and a report, and a report on the year-to-date operations of the committee.
Sounds good.
May I, through you, to those present who have been involved, I would love to hear thoughts on that, because that makes sense to me, that, just to clarify so that everyone involved is clear about that. So maybe to Mr. Cannelli.
Mr. Cannelli, if you'd come to the podium.
Jim Cannelli, Edgewood Place, 117 Edgewood Place, Fair TV committee from years past. I think that makes reasonable sense. The hope is, and it's what the first Selectman has laid out, is that what you're voting on today will be a sunsetted committee with two goals. One, to reestablish some kind of operational oversight, that you guys are very busy dealing with storms and everything else, and then at the same... And then, at the same time, doing what you described, selectmen, which is developing over the next few months, kind of the charge, the rules of the road for what would probably be some sort of ordinance language to more formalize the structure for Fair TV going forward beyond July 2013. And that certainly can be worked out in a report that can be provided to the Board of Selectmen for their own action as part of that process going forward. So I support what you've described. Thanks.
Other questions?
Before you go, first of all, thank you for your persistence of this and all your work. I also wanted to just recommend that as this process moves forward, particularly if the thought does become to make it an ordinance, which would go through the RTM process, that perhaps the committee consider inviting, and I know I may be kind of jumping into the next item a bit, but the committee might consider inviting some one or two folks from the RTM to perhaps attend the meetings and become more familiar, so that they could help sponsor and support that, if that's the way it goes.
I thoroughly think that's wise, but not to jump the gun further, Mr. Chairman. I've already had brief discussions with some of the nominees ahead of you on the agenda, and I think our sense is, either the first or second Monday of each month will be the meeting where we'll gather as regular meetings to, if we are approved and move forward. And in the course of those meetings, we'll do the oversight function to hear from the system manager and all about how things are going, and are things being done. We've got bills and things that have to be paid. Peg Central, our online services, do it at the end of the month. But I do think that will be a forum where any of your members here who are concerned can come to that meeting, and we'll make sure that it's members of the public. Interested citizens groups can also take part in that process, and we look forward to it. You know, we really want to... We really hope in a way that this will only broaden people's sense of ownership, broad ownership, regardless of party or affiliation, in their feeling of ownership over Fair TV. The way they're proud of, you know, the beaches, they should be proud in the same way, in a nonpartisan way of Fair TV.
Mr. Cannelli, thank you. Unless there's any other questions?
No.
All right. Any other comments? Is it okay to go to the public?
Sure.
Mr. Flynn, please come up.
Tom Flynn, 67 Sagem Road. And this may be... Actually, if Jim and I had had a chance to meet before this, 10 seconds ago, we would have been able... We would have run over this, and I wouldn't have to ask the question, but I think it's necessary to ask it in case you people feel that this is something that you want to comment on. I understand, I think, the charge, recommendations for the future, recommendations for change to the charge, and a report on year-to-date operation. I think I got that. But there are other things that I would like to think the committee could get involved in, and I just want to make sure that that is within the charge. The one in particular that I have in mind is that the Soundview Corporation in Bridgeport spent a lot of money and effort trying to just eliminate the Cable II Advisory Committee last year, and with it, Fair TV, it would have won. They did not get a good ruling from the DPUC, or whatever the person named...
Here.
DPUC is. If they try again this year, is it within the purview of this committee to come back to take a look at that and recommend what we need to do to defend ourselves? Or is this, that's not within the purview of the committee?
Okay. If I take a shot at that?
Yeah, please.
All right. I think that in simplest form, this charge is to promote the growth and use of Fair TV. So I know that it may not say that quite the exact words, but... So I would think it's well within the purview of the committee to make sure, whatever it needs to do to strengthen Fair TV and provide for the future of Fair TV as a necessity. And I think, conceptually, the idea of potentially taking it to the RTM, potentially building an ordinance, and embedding it more into the fabric of our community is what that's all about.
Okay.
So that's a long way of saying yes. Please support it to the best of your ability.
Good. Thank you.
I would just back that up, though. And number two, to provide for the ability of downtown departments and agencies to reach out to the public through cable TV. And that's part of what that is, is ensuring that you are able to provide for that. So I do see that.
Good. That will do it. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the public? All right, then. Back to the board.
So there's an amendment on the table, right?
Is the... I guess it's just the amendment. Yes, it's the second amendment.
Right. Which was to strike sentence one, strike sentence two, and replace it with... Jen, could you possibly read it back, so I don't get it wrong?
Okay.
Committee members shall serve...
Committee members shall serve a term ending on June 30th, 2013, and issue a report to the Board of Selectmen prior to June 30th, 2013.
As well as striking those two sentences, so...
And striking the two sentences. The first two sentences under duration.
Do you want to do that piece first, and then go to the report piece?
We already voted on that part, I thought, didn't we?
No.
No, I think that the striking and the change are all part of the...
Yeah. We voted on the additional sentence about the termination, but I don't think we voted on...
We did not. We only voted on the first amendment.
Right.
So before... Can we do it all together? Striking and then adding this report?
If we call it replacing, yes.
All right. I'll let you do that, then.
So we're going to replace the first two sentences with what Jen has just read?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Absolutely. But then Kristen had some additional language about definitions of the report. That's where you're going.
Right.
So do we want to add that to what we just did, vote on that, and then tackle that?
I think so. I think we want to add it in.
Go ahead.
I think you gave language to it. It was... And I don't know if you had that as well.
I tried to read it back.
Okay.
And a report from the committee should include, but is not limited to, recommendations from the committee, modifications, recommendations to the charge, and a report on the year-to-date operations.
The recommendations to the committee, I think, was recommendations for the future of Fair TV. Right. Can you read that language again?
A report should include, but is not limited to, recommendations from the committee, modifications, and recommendations to the charge, and a report on the year-to-date operations.
And I would just suggest that I think what Mr. Tetra said was recommendations for the future of Fair TV, tied to the recommended charge changes.
I think you're correct.
Which I think...
So that replaces the first two sentences, and then the last sentence, where the committee terminates on June 30th, 2013.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So we're voting on that amendment?
I'm agreeable to that.
Me, too.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, what's before us is the charge as amended. Any further discussion?
No.
Any further comment from the public on the charge as amended? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that charge has now been officially amended. All right. Next item up, we have Fair TV appointments. Is it okay to take these in group, or would you like to take them individually?
A group is fine.
Same with me.
All right?
Yes, please.
Then a motion before us to appoint to the Fair TV Operational Committee, Thomas Flynn, Democrat, 67 Sagem Road, Alexis Harrison, Republican, 88 Noah Drive, Pamela Jones, Democrat, 1495 Cross Highway, and Jim Cannelli, Democrat, 117 Edgewood Place. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. I'll just start with a comment, then, that I want to thank all four of our members, both for volunteering to serve, and their patience with us, as we've kind of wangled our way through this process of deciding how best to move this through and move Fair TV forward.
No, just thank you for serving, and again, thank you for your patience.
I would echo that. Tremendously grateful for the work that's already been done as well, and just acknowledge and recognize that we will continue to work to make sure this is a balanced group, which we talked about before.
Absolutely.
So...
And I think along those lines, we should mention, Mr. Kyle, as you pointed out in our past meeting, that we're still looking for one more member of this, and we'll evaluate other candidates to do that, but we wanted to get this started.
Correct.
With that, any comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, folks.
Congratulations.
Now, I believe three of you are here. Would anyone care to comment? Mr. Cannelli, the podium is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. First Selectman, Jim Cannelli, 117 Edgewood Place. Back on the Fair TV committee. I just want to let anybody who's listening to this, that our hope is, I'm going to be, as I mentioned just before, we're going to look for Monday meetings, because they're three of the weeks, they're fairly open for the system manager, Jerry Spino, and we'll see if we can work that out. Our hope is 7:30 here, probably in lower level, if it's available. That conference room also allows folks who come, if they're interested in seeing how the system works, we have the server. I also invite members of the Board of Selectmen to come down and see what is done. If you think Jerry's a magician, wait till you see his little trunk downstairs, you'll be amazed what he's actually able to accomplish with that very, very little trunk. But I really would encourage members of the public, PTA council, legal women voters, some organizations for seniors, taxpayer groups, this is an opportunity for you to come, see how we do these things. You know, our hope is, you know, we haven't overworked Jerry, he's going to be running a camera, and make sure people can see it broadcast, but it's a good opportunity to express yourself, and we'll look forward to doing that in the very near future. Okay? Great. Thanks.
And Mr. Cannelli, thank you both for your service, but also your vision in putting all this together.
Thank you. I just...
Attorney Lester?
Before they leave, hopefully... I'm sure that the members of the commission know this, but I would suggest, perhaps, that as they get started, they reach out to Eileen Cannelli to talk about FOI and noticing the meetings properly. I know you probably have done that already in past... Okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
First, my address has changed. It's no longer 1495 Cross Highway.
Ah, okay.
It's 240 Sunny Ridge Avenue.
Very good. Jen, will you get that for the...
I just wanted to mention that Tom Flynn, I guess, referenced this complaint that was filed by Soundview Community Media relative to the Cable Advisory Council. Cable Advisory Council provides some funding to Fair TV. If this complaint is successful, it would put in jeopardy at least the pathway for the funding that is received by our town committee. The Cable Advisory Council currently disseminates funds to the six Area 2 towns. I just wanted to notify you, since you're all together, that I've spoken to the Assistant Attorney General about this matter, who's representing the state and PURA in this complaint. And he thinks it's definitely in the interest of the town to file as an intervenor. The judge, the state, after the complaint was filed, asked for the Cable Advisory Council to be included as an essential party. What happened was, the motion was filed... The complaint was filed to essentially get rid of the... Well, get rid of the funding going to the council, which then goes to us, as well as other committees, because it said the Cable Advisory Council didn't exist. So the state came back and said, "Well, you never served the Cable Advisory Council. They can't defend themselves. You must serve them." The judge agreed, they're an essential party. The argument was made that the towns are also essential parties, as you can see, because the funding trickles down to us. The judge did not agree. However, it's... Three of the towns have filed as intervenors. I believe it's Woodbridge, Orange, and Milford has just filed also. It's... Anyhow, I just wanted to kind of give you that info.
Why don't you give us that... Why don't we do two things? One, you've made it where a board, it's obviously very important. Why don't we talk between now and the next meeting, and if we need more time, if there's more to inform the board about, perhaps at the next...
Absolutely.
...meeting, that you could step us through that.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we are done with this topic.
Yes. Finally.
All right. Well, thank you again for our friends at Fair TV. Our next stop is a request for the use of Town Green to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Quanis Club for the use of Town Hall Green, September 21st and 22nd of 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., for their 22nd Annual Craft Fair.
Nice.
May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, Quanis.
Yes. I would add that while I'm not currently a member, in the past, I have been a member of the Quanis Club. They do many great works, and this is one of their fundraisers each year, so they use this to raise money and help serve the communities. I think that's great. Okay to go to the public? Any comments from the public? All right. Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Quanis.
Right.
All right. Tax collector refunds. May I have a motion to accept the refunds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comment from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And last, town attorney, private executive session concerning pending litigation. I might ask the cameras to be turned off and recording equipment off, and if I can have a motion to go into private executive session.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
May I have a motion to come back into public session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. While in private executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. Are we ready to vote to come back into public? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. We're back in public session. May I have a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then, next up, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Bye.
Thank you, Jerry.
I should move that chair. Oh.